Next on the agenda is submission of new plans. Any new plans? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is old business, turning to Gimme Circle definitive subdivision, L R M E, LLC. This is not a public hearing. It's for the purpose of releasing lot number two. I'll start with Ralph if you want to provide a brief overview.
Sure, the owner of L R M E came to us to see if he could get lot two released. Some substantial work has been done on the road, and as you know, release of lots is dependent upon roadway condition. The applicant or their representative will explain he's looking for the lot release of two for the construction of a home for his son, and I think he had mentioned that one of the lots would go to his son when we had discussed the subdivision about a year ago. So that's where he's at, and you know, the engineering department went out and took a look, and as you see from Sam's memo.
Okay, great. I'm going to read into the record the memorandum from Leanne dated October 3rd regarding the lot release at Gimme Circle subdivision. It says, "A request for a release of lot number two that was created by the definitive subdivision, quote, Gimme Circle, end quote, was filed on September 26, 2024. The subdivision has an active Form E covenant that restricts buildings building on lots one and two until the installation of the way is completed. The engineering department is prepared a Form One detailing the costs associated with completing the installation of ways, which was attached to this memo. The planning board may reduce the number of lots being held by covenant if the board is satisfied with the progress of the construction of the ways and the installation of municipal services." I'm going to read Sam Jensen's and Paul Hilton's memo into the record as well. This is October 10th, 2024, regarding the application for a lot release of Gimme Circle, Form I, construction cost estimate. The engineering department has reviewed the subject lot release request. The following is offered for the board's consideration. First bullet point, construction of the road and drainage system commenced on or about June 15th, 2024, and has progressed substantially. Work performed has included site grading, drainage installation, binder paving, and other elements. Second bullet point, remaining work includes top course paving and related work, including drainage structure adjustments, inspection and testing, installation of property bounds and street sign, landscaping, including retention basin screening, street trees, site stabilization, sweeping and catch basin cleaning, preparation of as-built plans. Third bullet point, it is advised that the applicant surveyor confirm the as-built location of the installed binder pavement versus design prior to top course paving. Next bullet point, the department understands that the definitive plan approval requires completion of construction within a 12-month period, which would extend through June 14th, 2025, unless otherwise extended by the board. Final bullet point, the value of remaining work, including contingency, is estimated to be $132,690. It is recommended that surety on this amount, in this amount, be held until the remaining work is complete. Please contact the engineering department with any questions regarding this memorandum. So I think I'll probably turn it over to Sam if you want to add any, you know, further elaborate on any of that.
I would just say that there has been a significant amount of work that's been done up there. Engineering department has been out during the course of the work, everything we've seen, the work has been satisfactory. And I would just add to the third bullet point that we had regarding the location of the pavement. Since submitting this memo, we haven't been in touch with the applicant surveyor. They have indicated they are out there to locate it, so we don't see any anticipated problems.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I will open the matter up to the applicant or the applicant's representative, Attorney Fitch.
Thank you. And the chair, members of the board, my name is John Fitch, and been representing these folks. Indeed, it is a family affair. This is a two-lot subdivision. We're asking that lot two be released from the covenant, and it is so that Mike Bevelacqua can construct his own home there. Not that that should change the standards, but it truly is a little family affair. We're pleased with the report that you've had from Ralph and from Sam, and we show that a lot of work has been done, and there's even work that, like Sam just confirmed, that exceeds what was priced into the $134,000 worth of work left to do. If you were to vote to release lot two, which we're requesting, that would leave lot one. And we have brought with us a letter from our real estate broker, an opinion of value related to lot two, which is in the range of $300,000. And that was arrived at by comparing it with all the lot sales that have taken place in Sandwich this year. I was nearly dropped my teeth when I saw the prices, but it appears that just about every undeveloped lot that has been sold in the community thus far this year is very close to $300,000. And I'd like to submit this for your file.
Thank you. Shall I submit it to the record and read it in?
After you're done with it, we have to stamp it in for the record.
Okay, so just noting, it's a Kinlan Grover opinion dated September 27th as to the value, just as Attorney Fitch had.
Right. It's put in to support the file. So there's plenty of value left to cover the costs that are still left to, or the value, I should say, because the family is doing the work themselves. And I think that's it. Thank you for listening, and we hope you'll give these guys a lot to build a house on. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I will open it up to the board. Any questions, comments for Sam or Attorney Fitch?
I just have, if I may, have one question for Sam. Sam, in the original decision, under the list of conditions, there was condition number six, which was prior to commencement of any activity related to the construction of the roadway, the town engineer shall be notified. Just checking to see that you were notified. And it also says in accordance with that, the planning board was to receive a letter from the registered professional land surveyor certifying that all pertinent ways, lot and drain lines, and municipal services are laid out on the ground as shown in the approved definitive plan. Do you know if that happened?
I can tell you that the engineering department received notifications, and that there was statement that was done in advance that was reviewed by the engineering department against the.
Okay, so we were in compliance with the conditions as far as that's basis, my question. Do you know if we, Ralph, if the planning received the requested letter?
Usually when we get confirmation from the engineering department, we note it to the file, so.
I can say here the owner would submit a letter. I'm just asking if the letter was received from the owner to the planning department?
I, to the best of my recollection, I don't know what's in the file. I know we were, like I said, I know we were informed by the engineering department.
I'm just, like I said, I'm just verifying the conditions. Do you know what I can see that pertinent at this moment? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments, questions? Okay, I think we can move to make a motion to approve if everyone feels the same. So I can make the motion, right? Or do I have to go to anybody other than the chair?
No, this one, you can make the motion.
Before I do, actually, just to confirm, actually, there is one thing I want to confirm. So the surety is going to remain as is. That's not going to change. It's just a release of that lot, the surety of the 132.
We hold lot one.
Will be held with lot one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then in that case, I will make a motion to release lot two from the covenant restricting the building.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Okay, so it's released. Shall I sign it now, or?
Before the end, because I have to notify.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes care of that agenda item. Nothing left for old business. There is, let's see, some, any new business? There's no new business to discuss. So that takes us right to board discussion. There's looks like four items for board discussion, beginning with Lookout Ridge Cluster Subdivision Surety, which I will turn to Ralph if you want to give us a little bit of information on that.
Yeah, I will just give it brief, but I think Sam is probably better because he's been more, he's working, he's the one who has to go out there all the time to look at the road. There are some issues still left on Lookout Ridge, which is, I forget the names. It's one is Astrid and Maxwell, thank you. So the developer has to, there's some completion work that needs to be done. I know the engineering department has been reaching out to the developer, hopefully to get that complete, and then the town is still holding some surety for the completion. The homeowners again can't create a homeowners association until that's completed, so again, I think Sam is probably has, is better versed at explaining as to what's going on because he's had or not contact with the developer. So, and then we kind of figure out what next steps after that.
Thanks, Ralph. Sam?
Yes, we've been out on numerous occasions with concerns with just the state the subdivision is in, now that the homes are, the lots are all built on and the homes are occupied at this point. We've been attempting to set up a meeting with the developer to go over the remaining work items. One of our primary concerns is on Astrid Way, the function of the drainage basin that's on that side. Some of the larger storms that we've had in recent years has actually backed up and flooded the roadway. This may be due to a part overdue maintenance. It's hard to say, but we've been doing some maintenance that's been performed, but in our recent communications with the developer, it's been unsuccessful. So I really wanted to make sure we brought this to the board's attention because we may be reaching a point where we need to take some action, whether it be to use the surety that's in place, to finalize the work as needed to do that, or work with the residents and find a way to allow the homeowners association to do the work if the developer is on the line. So it's more of an FYI at this point, that there may be additional items pending, and there might be more action in the near future.
Is the developer just not responsive, or?
To the latest communications, not responsive.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for me. And I missed it, and I apologize if we said it early by Ralph. So with respect to the surety that's in place, are we concerned at all that it's not adequate for the amount of work that remains, given, you know, prices are going up since the original work started and so forth? So how confident are you that the current surety is sufficient?
Prices have escalated, as you mentioned, and it's not certain at all that all the work will be able to be completed. However, there are some items on the list, including restoration, establishing vegetation on road shoulders, where the residents have gone ahead and taken care of that themselves. So there are some items like that where the work, it may have been reduced in the last, you know, the last work at the cost of the overall development. But I would say in general, it's unlikely that all the work will be able to be completed that we would like to see with the surety funds that are currently held. I don't have the exact values. It's something that we'll be looking into more closely. Our preference is for the developer to finish the work.
Always. You know, we're always fighting this balance of letting people proceed, like we just did with Gimme Circle, and then running into issues like this where over time, all of a sudden the surety we had in place is not adequate. And then, you know, the town gets, in the end, gets stuck with the bill, which is what we're trying to avoid. Besides waiting, I mean, you keep reaching out to them, you're giving a some FYI, which I understand, and I appreciate that. What is your timeline? Right now, based on everything you know, when would you say enough is enough, and we would have to take a different action?
That's something that I'll want to discuss with Ralph and Leanne, the planning department.
We better before Thursday, because Ralph's a short timer. I'm just teasing him. Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. I think this developer developed two separate properties under this one subdivision plan.
Two roads.
Two roads, okay.
So it's a single approval. There's multiple layers to the approval of the Cape Cod Commission DRI, the planning board definitive plan approval, and special apartment for the cluster subdivision. So there's multiple layers to the approval, but it is a single subdivision.
Okay. So the surety that's being held would be for both roads?
Yes, yes, both roads and all the infrastructure associated with both roads.
Okay. And so are both roads having drainage issues, or just one more than another? Are they equal in issue, or?
From what I have observed, it appears that Astrid Way's drainage issues are worse than what has been experienced on Maxwell. However, there is drainage maintenance that's being on both sides.
Okay. And the surety, is that typically used for maintenance, or that's just to complete a project, and then maintenance is undertaken by?
It's really set up to complete the project, and so it's, and then at some point, the maintenance of the subdivision will have to be taken up by a private homeowners association.
And you had mentioned that that wouldn't be known whether or not it's maintenance-related until something happens? Was there, is it going to be an inspection?
Correct. My, I want to get the developer to engage a very, you know, to be retention based on Astrid Way.
Okay.
And then make an opinion as to whether or not it's accurate, that's currently, is current state, or what other actions may be needed to bring it up to compliance.
And then the drainage station, does it meet the requirements of as it was approved? Or when you say if they're going to go out and look at it to see if it needs further work to meet a higher demand than expected?
Really, it comes, in my view, and there's different ways of looking at it, but in my view, it needs to be evaluated in some way in the sense, so which, which we know on the timetable, and we can't predict the futures exactly what will happen when, but it needs to be monitored through some random events to develop a correlation with how it will perform in a water ceiling, which is unlikely to be seen in the amount of time that we'll probably be evaluating this. But there's some methods that are available to correlate the functioning basin, based on observed performance on it.
Okay. Couple of questions on the heels of that. One, is there like a surety agreement that we might be able to look at in anticipation of it coming before us? You know, like the scope of what the surety would cover and what it might not cover?
That's something that we would develop. So the best thing we have right now is Form I, construction cost estimate that we prepare when there's either a, or any kind of change in surety that's held, whether it's a release or a request for additional supplemental funds, which is rare, but it's usually a release of surety funds. And looking back through the files, this development has been under construction with it for ongoing over 10 years. Looking back at the files, our latest construction cost estimate, Form I, is some dated, so it's something I want to go back over. And to the earlier point, construction costs have escalated, so it's not clear to be as we're standing right now or the elements that I would like to see completed to tie up all the loose ends in this development that could actually be covered by that.
Okay, because I'm just trying to understand, you know, when it doesn't get released, what the surety can be used for, and how that's determined, because it sounds like if there's further work that would need to be done outside of what was initially approved, just how that would work operationally, you know, with the office, you know, internally, and how with us reviewing it, you know, how to release those funds for what purpose? I think I'm just trying to understand that a little bit.
Well, I would think that the process would be relatively straightforward as far as pavement and drainage. So if there is excavating, retention basin, and then replacing material with sand, and then reloading and reestablishing vegetation to reshape the basin and the retention basin, and then reestablish grades in accordance with the board's planned set, that might be one example of work that may be. And in terms of like paving, there are pavement defects that need to be corrected, and there's utility work that needs to be finished.
Okay.
And then there's still some restoration elements, there's confirmation of concrete bounds that are required to be installed in correct rotations and certification on those.
A lot of different things.
Yeah, yeah. There's a number of elements that need to be addressed.
Through the chair, if I may. This board, typical release of surety through this board is the developer, you know, is at the end, at the end of the, at the end of the cycle and the construction plan. Engineering department goes, they look at it, all looks good, they come before you, almost like the release of lot, same thing. Engineering department submits, everything's been completed, we sign off, release of lot. This board has done that several times in the past, not many times because we don't have as many subdivisions as we once had. The other things I think, not, you know, not that we're in unfamiliar grounds, which we have to have conversations with town council if the developer remains unresponsive, because either way, you know, if the town, if the developer forfeits the surety and the town takes it to do, to do the road work, then, you know, we have other master general laws which we have to comply with. We're also looking, you know, do we develop, where the homeowners, do they become a homeowners association, and do we have the ability to release the surety to them so they can complete the work? So, you know, release the surety, number one. We're familiar with, you know, the next two scenarios become a little more complicated, which we really need town council. And due to the level of complication, I think that's why Sam is really, I mean, he came before this board a few, two months ago, three months ago, to give you the heads up, and again, further on down the line, and probably the next step is, you know, what is the action that this planning board will need to take? And again, that if, again, if the developer remains unresponsive, and at that point, we would get advice from council, you know, the planning staff, along with engineering, will sort of develop a recommendation that we can, that we'll put forth to this board.
Without speaking to council, do we know whether or not the developer is liable beyond what the surety amount is, or is there attachment limited by the surety?
Yeah, that one, yeah, that we would have to, yeah, that's something we have to, yeah, we would look into.
Okay, okay, great. I have one more question.
I'm just wondering how we came to where we are with this particular subdivision. I know, I know for a fact that some of these homes are actually in their second round of homeownership. So I guess I'm curious as to how it's kind of gone on as long as it has.
Yeah, this was, I mean, this was an interesting subdivision. It started its life as an interesting subdivision. It was not initially intended to be what it is, its iteration is today. And we had, I have to say, while the developer was building it during COVID, they were pretty responsive and responsible. We, you know, we collected through, through the DRI process, through the Cape Cod Commission, I mean, a lot of funds were collected, significant amount of funds were collected from, you know, from the developer. So they had, you know, they met the criteria for, you know, for lot release. They were moving along and, you know, and fortunately, it's almost as if, you know, all the houses were built, sold, and, you know, they're determining, you know, you know, do they want to keep it going? So it's interesting. I mean, they made, they had to give money to the Cape Cod Commission. We have money for traffic mitigation, you know, money was given to Sandwich Housing Authority for affordable housing. So, you know, I have to say that up until this point, maybe a year ago, you know, they were a pretty responsive group, and we just hope, you know, we hope that continues. So that, you know, that's the best I could speak to it. They've been pretty responsible. I do feel for the residents over there, again, you know, those homes are of significant value, and not that that should mean anything because it's quality of life, but, you know, I'm sure they were sold a bill of goods, and we're trying to, you know, we're trying our best with in our office and the engineering to get some resolution for them.
And they're precluded from forming a formal HOA?
As, yeah, as it is now, because usually developer has the, wants the developer signs off, so technically the roadway is still their responsibility. And again, we're just trying to figure out a way, you know, if, and I'll back it up, you know, hopefully, we want the developer to do it then, you know, but we're looking at a way to, if we could transfer those responsibilities to a homeowners association.
And what would come before us is whether or not we're agreeable to turn it over, the surety over to a homeowners association, if that's what the homeowners would like to do? Is that what would come before us? Like, what would we be having to decide? What would be presented to us?
I think first would be probably a strong letter from the planning board to the developer to get it done.
Okay.
I think if that would be, that would be step, you know, step number one.
Okay, okay.
Just to have a final.
How long would we wait to take that stuff?
We, I think, I think that we're, you know, I hate to say we're trying to figure it out, but, you know, giving the developer an opportunity to sort of step up, at least have a meeting with the engineering department, so I would say, and, you know, we haven't had an internal conversation about it, and I really don't want to put any time, because Thursday's my last day, but I'm sure it'll be in short, in short order. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 yeah, it's, just because I'm going, I mean, you know, Sam is very good, we have a very good engineering department and a very good planning office, so it will not intentionally linger or languish or.
So along that line, I'd like to make a request going forward. I'm concerned that time will go on, and it'll be six weeks before we hear about this again, or it could be two months, whatever. And I'd like to ask that, I think we're at a point where we should be getting an update, even if it's no change, at every future meeting that we're together. So I'd like to see it on the agenda going forward until it gets resolved, and we just simply get an update. You know, next meeting, maybe the update will something come in, Sam saying, or the planning board will say, yes, developer has responded, they've met with us, we're moving forward, we don't know the details yet. We don't know the details yet, but at least it gives us some confidence that where this is heading and what might be in front of us. As opposed to in six weeks, you're coming before us with, we need to put a letter out. And all of a sudden, we're saying, okay, well, what happened in the last six weeks? I think it would be easier and better if you keep us informed. And I don't think that's a huge burden, so I'd ask that.
Yeah.
If we could do that, please. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything that they'd like to add on the board? Okay, so then we will turn it over to the homeowners. I'm assuming that that's who's here with us today. So if you want to take turns, come up, just say your name and your address, and then we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name's Alan Himmelberger, and I live at five Astrid Way.
Alan, if I could just interperform, can you just speak into the microphone, please, sir? Thank you.
My name's Alan Himmelberger, and I am residing at five Astrid Way. I've become very good friends with Sam and and Sean Harrington over the past year or so. The original street, to my knowledge, and the original drainage dates back to about 2008. And so the existing drainage that was then matched up with the detention basin when that was put in was a challenge, I think, for everybody. And to Sam's credit, we had Jay Hodley and Sons, I believe, come January 31st to pump that out, which was a convoluted set of drains, to say the least. I knew I should have gone to engineering school and law school, but I didn't. But it has been a lot of work for Sam and Sean and for Ralph to try and track this down. I believe the developer did not respond to the attorneys closing on both number three and number seven that you referenced that were sold this past May and April, April and May. And so the homeowners contacted me, geez, what do we do? And I said, I think a side letter stating that there's no HOA and no money's owed would suffice. But it has been a developer who has not been responsive, to my knowledge, to anything from anybody over the last few months. And a forfeiture of surety certainly seems to be one option. I'm not sure if that would even get their attention, but it has been frustrating. We have a straw collar with four stakes and a traffic cone. That's the view of my retirement home, and it's been there since March of this year. So it has been frustrating for us. The the covenantor is still the developer, to Ralph's point. And until the town accepts the subdivisions, both Maxwell and Astrid, we, the residents cannot become the HOA, to my understanding. So I think that we are just waiting for the next steps. And I say that that both Sam and Sean and Ralph have been very responsive to this. Part of the issue was, once we had everything drained by Hodley and Sons, the outside contractor, we didn't get enough rain to test out, to see if it would work. So we did have, as mentioned, two storms that flooded the street, Astrid Way. But since then, and since we've had the drainage work done, we don't know if it will still work as designed. I believe, talking to the residents on Astrid Way, we do not want to take on the responsibility that is the town's to hold the developer accountable for the work that needs to be done to finish. Some electrical, some road, and some drainage on both Maxwell and Astrid, so that the lookout ridge, HOA can then move forward. So we're just waiting and cautiously optimistic that we can get the developer's attention at some point.
Can I ask a couple of questions to Sam on the heels of some of your comments? One is for that drainage that you were describing, did that come from surety? Who paid for that?
No, that was done over the course of spring, if I remember correctly. And that was a clean out that after some communication with the developer, with the development coordinator.
Okay, who is the developer?
My contact we have is Tom Lee.
Is Tom Lee? Mead? Mead, and what company is is he represent, does he represent? Okay. And since, when's the last communication with this Mr. Mead? Like, you know, have you reached out to him? Okay. So he's so far, has at the very least been responsive?
The last time I'm aware of him being responsive was over the summer. There was an attempt to send a meeting, which then had to be moved. And then very successful again after that.
So the email communications have been one-sided? There hasn't been a response to them, or they have just not one?
No, there was a back and forth. There was a back and forth over the summer.
Over the summer, but not since? So when you said the past week, that was Sean Harrington emailing Tom?
Right, they can do it fast.
Okay. I think I would be interested in learning about the extent to which Tom Mead or the the developer, whoever he may represent, they might be liable beyond the surety, just to kind of have an idea on what that might look like. Because I think at this point, a letter might be better off sooner than later if he doesn't respond to Mr. Harrington's emails. I I do think waiting longer is not to the homeowner's benefit nor to ours. So I'd like to know kind of what that might look like, you know, from a town's perspective, from a liability standpoint, and also the cost it might take. You know, is that if there's no surety agreement, is, where does that liability lie? How difficult would it be to get them to be liable? You know, kind of who they are, to know what assets, if any, their company might have? If there's any other developments that they're doing or intend to do, or other land that they might own in Sandwich or in Barnstable County, or in Plymouth County even, to know if there, you know, something that we could attach to try to recover? Just some preliminary work anyways, in anticipation of having to write a letter that might have some teeth versus, you know.
So is it reasonable to think we could have closure on that at the next meeting, if we gather that information?
I think it's a lot of information to gather in a short period of time.
I might be able to help you out.
Okay.
I have a friend, the Farrars, I don't know, I'm sure they've probably mentioned me. And I didn't realize that this was going on, but Kelly did ask me to do some research, and I'd probably spend about five hours on a deep dive on those gentlemen that developed the property. So I have quite a bit of information on them.
Okay, yeah, maybe talk to the the board and to town council so that we're, you know, properly apprised, so that we can make an informed decision. And I think one that has some some gravity to it, you know, I think we need to kind of make a decision and some sort of a move on it forward. Yeah, because it's 2008, and if you're dealing with drainage issues now and and you're looking at cones now, I think that that's too long. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, thank you. If you could just state your name and address.
My name is Bob Angelini, two Astrid Way. And I've moved in last July. And I'm going to say in 2021, when I signed the purchase, that's why I'm glad you asked who the developer was. On my purchase and sales agreement, I've been trying to find this out. It says the developer is Anthony Barone, okay? That he took over from Tom Mead. I don't know what is true, I can just tell you what's on my purchase and sales agreement. That Anthony Barone's signature is on it as a developer. And PJ Snyder is on there as the builder of the houses. And he built all the houses in there. And Anthony Barone was, we were all told that he was a developer. Alan, last last time we met, he brought up Tom Mead, and I was like, who's Tom Mead? I never heard of him. He said he was a developer. So I'd like clarification, who really is the developer and who's who is responsible for for this? That's the first thing. The second thing, I was on the planning board from the town that I moved from in New Hampshire. And when we had a situation like this, and I'm sure that you people have probably already did this in other cases, but I'll I'll bring it up, that when someone is non-responsive, a developer is non-responsive to getting stuff done, especially in the thought of, we all think as homeowners, there's a lot more to be done than there is surety bond left over. So I'm wondering how much that surety bond is, number one. As a matter of fact, my house was the last one to be built on Astrid Way. And a permit was not being given to the developer, meaning the developer that I know as a developer, being Barone and PJ Snyder as the builder, because of the retention pond was failing, all right? And they tried it again, and they still didn't do it according to the, what was discussed for them to do. And then I'm like, you know, I'm I'm sitting here waiting for six months for my house to be started, and then they said that they gave up. Again, don't know if these numbers are accurate, I can only tell you what they told me. Forty thousand dollars as a surety bond for fixing that retention pond. I don't know what, how much other money is left in the surety bond over that. Getting back to my other point, which I started to make till I regressed, and I apologize for that, is that when we were on the board and a developer is not responsive, we allowed no more permits to be given to him. Whether he's seeking to be doing this, whether both the builder can't get anymore and the developer can't get anymore, is just a suggestion that maybe that's one thing you could do, or maybe there is no land for them to buy to develop in in Sandwich. I really don't know. But I like your idea of of trying to put a lien on other things that they own, because I know that Mr. Barone is extremely wealthy, and he owns all, he owns the stone business that's in town, it's in Mashpee, and also I think it's in either Dennis or Yarmouth, all right? So he has plenty of assets, okay? We, as as Alan says, we're not interested, well, first of all, we are a homeowners association. There is a homeowners association, to my understanding, and I think there's either one or two names on that, one of them being Tom Mead. Is there a second one on there, Alan? Someone said there was a second one, but the bottom line is, who are you going to, who are you going to hand it over to? Do you hand it over to the homeowners? The homeowners, we don't have the education to do this and how much it's going to cost. We fear it's going to cost a lot more than what the surety bond that we know of, which is the forty thousand, which I was told.
Why, I just.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I said, that's one of the reasons why, really, right now, we're just looking for more information.
Yes.
Just to help guide us.
Yeah.
In the event it does cost more, to the extent that the town might be liable for it, just so that we have an understanding on on making a decision moving forward. So as far as attaching assets and things like that, that's just really for fact finding at this point, just to see what we're, we have to work with, if anything at all. So just a preliminary kind of point.
And one point of clarification, if I may, asking the board, are we considered a private road or a public road right now?
Private.
We're private? And but we have approval from the town, at least, I'm I'm told, again, that's why I'm asking for clarification, that the town is going to plow during the winter, is that correct? Because you did last year. The year before, you didn't.
I don't, I haven't seen the plow list, so. The the town, just so you know, the town can pry, can plow private roads.
Yes.
So. But Astrid and Maxwell are all private roads. I don't know if it's on the, I don't know if it's on the plow list, so.
Who do we, who do we pass that to and find that out for sure?
It's the Public Works Department. You can have it online, but you can also call them.
So he just looked at the the covenants that he has, the HOA, and guess who the two names that are on there? Mead and Barone, okay? No surprise. And just so you know, my particular house has several items that need to be repaired under the warranty that comes with the house. And just like the planning board, no return calls. We've actually sent formal letters to their attorney and dropped them off and stuff. Still haven't got a thing from them. So that's who you're dealing with.
Thank you for your time and for coming before us, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I have a, some questions for clarification, just a few things. I, and it was tough for me to hear Melissa. I I couldn't hear exactly what you said about this. You're working on this, someone requested you do, could you just help me on this? I think I couldn't hear exactly what you said.
I have a friend who lives on Astrid Way and was just mentioning some of the issues that they were having, that they weren't able to form a homeowners association. And I didn't understand the extent that it was, had gone. But she knows that I'm pretty good about, I guess, research and finding things out about people. And so she'd asked me to do that about the developers. And so I don't know if she shared that with you. Okay, I I can't find it, I don't think it's on in the cloud, but I have it somewhere. But I probably spent about four hours one day researching these two individuals and all the companies that they own and other.
So this was at the request of a friend, and you've provided this to the friend?
Yes, nothing to do with planning board.
Okay, and the the other question I have, this did not feel like a board discussion, so I trying to understand, we took testimony from, both of you are homeowners there?
Yes, sir.
How did these homeowners come to be invited to come give us testimony as opposed to other homeowners? That's what I'm trying to understand. Again, this didn't feel like a board discussion, not that it wasn't a value, but it did not feel like a board discussion. And I'm I'm trying to understand, Ralph, maybe you can help me understand, how did this come on the agenda and how did these two individuals come to be invited? Were you invited? Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
I was, I just showed up when I found out it was on the agenda.
Okay.
So, right, so this was not, I mean, it's on an agenda, the agenda's a public document. Sam wanted to put it on, you know, request it, that it goes on so to update the board. So it's a public document and the homeowners, you know, Alan visits our office like every other week, so he probably, he probably saw it. And, you know, because it's, because it's a public document, he came in and and it's not really, you know, it's not a public hearing, so it's not testimony, but it's information.
It is, well, we can, we can debate the word.
Okay.
Well, we did take, you know, we did take information. It is testimony, I mean, they, I'm taking what they're saying is true, so they're testifying, so. On the fact we didn't swear on them, but we can, we can debate the word. I I cannot recall sitting on a board discussion where we've had invited individuals from the audience to speak. They're allowed to listen, my recollection, we haven't, that's, I haven't, you know, can recall, I could be incorrect. So just a little concern in in that as we go further with this, that it becomes more open to everyone that's that's, you know, affected by it. And I'm concerned that just because it was on the agenda, but on the board discussion, may have not brought the attention that it deserves. This is troubling to me, the way this is being handled on the board discussion.
I I get your point, Jeff, but I'm just, again, this is for, you know, for for us from the engineering department, it's the initial stage of it, but we'll.
No, but we, you know, during board discussion, we've always had staff participate, absolutely. And they speak, and we answer our questions, and we develop a plan. And we develop how we're going to go forward, over reflecting on something that we had requested from them. All right, but to take testimony, you know, from from others that are not part of the staff, that's not my recollection of us having.
Where does input and testimony, I think there might be a line between that. So just to kind of clarify, if it's, it might not necessarily be qualified as testimony. If it's under a board discussion and we're being apprised of a situation so that we can anticipate having to make a decision, understanding the scope of the issue, I think is helpful to that end. We, you know, maybe it would be important to let the board know, to note that it's not testimony, that we're just taking input from people who, you know, that it's not testimony, that we're just taking input from people who, you know, see the agenda items being posted. Um, I don't think of pu- public hearing, we're not making a decision on a topic today, it's really just an apprisement and something that might be coming down the pike. So I don't think that there would be any harm that would come of it, there would be no striking of any decision being made, um, you know. I think, in that regard, I don't think there's any detriment to it, and I would certainly not consider it testimony. Any other comments, or?
We don't have an action before the-
Correct.
Right.
Exactly.
So, um, I mean, I certainly think some of that kind of segues into our next board discussion item, but I guess my question is, where does, if we're going to kind of keep an eye on this continuing problem and gain some knowledge and information of what's been going on, and determine whether or not they're gonna be responsive, or get an update to that, is this going to continue to stay under board discussion, or do we need to formally place that somewhere else on the agenda? And then that way, the public is aware, I mean, obviously, they saw the agenda and came to give what their opinions are. I wouldn't say, you don't have to believe that is true, what somebody reports, but certainly it's input that I think is helpful for us to decide where that agenda item is gonna be now placed, so that we can kind of keep an eye on this very troubling behavior that's going on.
Generally speaking, hearing from the public is the discretion of the chair, okay? Um, when, when it's a public hearing, there are specific criteria that are, that are established in Mass General Law. Primary among them is the, um, is the public notification, uh, public, uh, notification to the abutters, and, and the, um, and, uh, notice in the, um, in the, in the paper that a public hearing is, is, um, is taking place. Um, because, I, again, the sp- specific criteria, because it's a public hearing and a decision is made and, and it, as an adjudicatory board, you have to make it, you know, have to do it, uh, you know, fair, fair and balanced in your decision-making. With, under board discussion, generally, the public doesn't speak, but it's, it's up to the discretion of, of, of the chair, um, if they so choose to, to add, uh, clarification, uh, clarification to the issue. Again, at this point, I don't know if it will ever become, um, a public hearing, uh, you know, if there's, you know, if we, if we go down the road, you know, and something to do, you know, with the surety and release a surety, and it becomes a public hearing, then that's, you know, we have, we have established, um, um, criteria which we need to do. But under, under this circumstance, again, general, excuse me, generally speaking, as, as, as you know, you know, um, we don't, we don't take, um, you know, don't hear from the public. Although, in the recent past, people have spoken, you know, you, you've had a few people make quick, you know, quick comments, whether it be, you know, about the, um, you know, heritage, or it be about Village Green. So it's not completely unprecedented, but, um, but it's, uh, uh, again, you know, you have, you know, some discretionary way as, as a board to do, um, to help you in your decision-making process as you move down the, down the road.
Just speaking from, you know, my standpoint as chair, I think it's important to hear the public. I think the fact that they came on an item, on an agenda item, that is just labeled board discussion and the frequency in which they visit the planning board, I think it just lends itself to the importance of the issue.
I agree.
So I do think it's important, and we're really here to represent the town, so I think in that way, I think if we can include them, we should be listening to them. Um, just kind of reiterating that, I would not consider this, nor is it testimony. We can take their opinions and their experiences for just that, in consideration for our future decisions that we may or may not have to make.
Right, so it sounds like-
So, just, so it's not misstated, I am not implying that public should not be able to speak. In fact, we're gonna talk about a change, potentially to our agenda, that I ask that we talk about, which we do invite public comment as a formal item. So I don't want anyone to think, I don't want public input, I want public input, but as a board, I wanna make sure that we do it in such a manner that all individuals feel that they are invited to come. And it's, all I'm indicating is that this did not feel like a board discussion, it did not, from my recollection, my years on the board, is the manner in which we've handled items like this, and I could be totally wrong, but it seemed to me, we, we handled them differently, so that we would get a greater participation and, and could more act on it. Because as you say, you know-
That may, may be a next step at some point, but I think this was-
Usually in a board discuss, usually in board discussion, it's staff input is what we usually take.
Chair discretion, it sounds like, and, yeah.
I'm not arguing with that either, I'm just, all I'm indicating is my history, it's typically staff, and we're gonna open it to the, open it, and, and again, I largely support public input, I like to see big groups here, in all of our items. I just wanna make sure, I'm not sure that when we list it on the board discussion, that generally speaking, the public's gonna feel like, oh, I can go and speak at that, cause that's not how it's typically handled. As you say, it's discretionary. That was my only point. I appreciate everything these individuals have to say. I look forward, discussion is further, that's why I ask at every meeting, we get an update on it, cause it is important.
I think, real quick, I'm sorry, real quick, did you wanna, I know she was starting to say something, did you have something that you wanted to add?
No, I, I mean, I think it's appropriate, my, I mean, for what it's worth, that we continue the board discussion and we take any input-
Okay.
... from people. Um, and I was going to ask, is that our plan for the next meeting, to continue this as board discussion, since there's no current action?
I, I think that's an appropriate course of action, to continue to, and I think Jeff has already said that, put that, put this on the agenda, so that we can keep a close eye on it and get progress reports, and if appropriate, take further action.
Um, so, I'm kind of hearing that you just think it maybe should have gone on the agenda under old business?
It's not old business, it's new business. It's the first time that we're, we're discussing it, but, yeah, I think it may-
Well, I mean, because the, the subdivision has been, you know, previously handled by the board, that's all I was saying. But is, was that sort of, the point is that it-
Yeah, I, 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 I understand what you're saying about old business, maybe it should have gone now. I was thinking it should have gone under new business. Uh, I, my, my main point was, a board discussion typically is a board discussion, and we invite the staff in, which is what my history, you, has been on this board.
Right, right.
And that when we've wanted public input, in order to promote public input and so forth, we've done it in other means to make sure it happens. That's all.
Right.
Cause I appreciate this, and I wanna hear from more people from the, the subdivision, so that we get a greater feel about, you know, what all the issues are, and what's been going on over the years, and what issues have been put forward to us, you know, cause in the end, there's a likelihood that the town's gonna have to step forward and take some ownership, and we wanna make, we wanna have clarity on what that is-
Right.
-as we go forward. That's, that was my only point.
My point was just, maybe it's just the placement on the agenda that maybe made a little bit of the difference.
In, in the risk of what that prevented, that's all. That was my only point.
You know, uh, uh, again, our original intent was, was an update, uh, to let, to let the board know where we're, you know, where we're at, and what our next steps are going to be. So, um, and that was, that's what we thought with the extension of the, uh, of the discussion would be, uh, but we'll, you know, we'll review it, and we'll see exactly where, what, you know, what, maybe the next couple times will be an update, and then the next time we'll put it on old business, or something just as old, to let the board know, uh, you know, a quick update. We have, you know, we have, we have discussed it with the, with the developer or not, and then the next time, we'll put under old business, you know, letter to developer, just, just so you know what's coming.
Just out of curiosity, do you need to have an action item to make it a business agenda item? Because it just, if it's just an update, would it-
Yeah, no, yeah, but usually, you, you, you know, it's, uh, board discussions are updates, but, but old business, new business, um, you know, jazz, as we, as you saw here with Gimme Circle, you know, it was old business, and, um, you know, you, you heard from, you know, from, you know, from the applicant. I just want to make the board aware that whether it's old business, new business, board discussion, um, it does not warrant, um, it's not considered a public hearing, right? There's no abutters, there, you know, nobody's, we're not under an obligation to, to officially, uh, inform the abutters to, you know, to mailing, cause those are pretty, you know, quite extensive and, and typi, and, you know, expensive, and, and, uh, put a notification in the, um, in the, um, in the newspaper. So those are, again, those are reserved for, you know, for public hearings.
If it's a new or an old item, it wouldn't require publication?
Correct.
So basically, it would just literally be a movement from a board discussion to a different, but it would, nothing other than its placement on the agenda would, would change.
It would give it, I, I think it would be, give it better clarity to the board as to, as to what actions they can take, and, 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 you know, what, what they can hear.
Okay.
And, and, again, to, to, um, you know, to Jeff's point, typically, discussions are amongst the board and, and staff. So I, I, I would think, um, typically and traditionally, that's, you know, that's what they're reserved for.
I'm wondering if it's worth sending an initial, because of the time it's passed, this issue's been handled, sending an initial letter that might not have a strong cadence, that says, we're on it and we're paying attention, seeing that gets in the promotion going. If it doesn't, then it won't work, and we'll have a more impactful letter?
I'd like to know what, I'd like to have the impactful letter, I'd like to understand what it might look like before even sending out an initial one. I just would like personally, well, not personally, professionally, as a board member, I would like to understand a bit more about the extent to which we can do what we can do. Um, and then being able to maybe send out a letter, a, a simpler, formal letter, followed by something different. But I, I definitely would like an update, um-
Wait, maybe the gap I'm having is, are we able to say now that they failed to meet their scope? Is that just a simple statement?
Okay.
So, completing all aspects of the subdivision within a timeframe that was expected, I would say it's, it's, uh, unlikely that they met that. I, I, without having, uh, a schedule in front of them, for what we can, for the extensions of their schedule, uh, but the amount of time that has passed since then, so, at the least, the time for completions is an issue.
So what is the timeline of how long it will take your department to come up with the cost of all the remedies that need to be done there?
Um, that's something we need to have together, both at the short, or, I don't know, on our end, our, our estimate, just to update that. Uh, in terms of prioritizing what those are, I think that'll, that'll take some additional thought and discussion. Uh, and then there's, uh, the pieces of legal questions that are outside the scope of my, my part, my handle, that would be through a planning to go to town council.
It might be helpful to have some of that information for the letter?
What was that?
It might be helpful to have some of that information for the letter?
Yeah, I think so. I would just like to have a better understanding of the situation with a little bit more detail, um, before making a decision on any action. Um, but I, I'm, I'm not opposed to a simpler letter initially, um, just to kind of maybe help move things along, but knowing what we have to work with, um-
Yeah, I just think my, my professional experience would be, if, if it's a fact that they are not met the scope of the schedule, the sooner you can have a formal communication about that and let them know that we're on to it, the faster it would get them to start moving, and, and then yes, right there. So, I think a couple of those could pass easily, so, thank you.
I'm in agreement with you also, I'm hesitant to keep kicking the can down, well, I'm, first of all, I'd like to say I did not, I was not aware of this as a problem when I was doing the research that I was doing. I thought it was just, I was doing it for, at the request of a friend, for her own purposes. I didn't, um, understand the extent of the situation, and that it would be, um, something that would be coming back before us here. But I'm really reluctant to keep, um, sort of, you know, we're gonna maybe check in on this in the future. I'd really like to, um, have something sort of ironclad that we can move forward with today. It's some, whether that's a deadline, that we're gonna have a letter, we're gonna have all of our pieces of the information that we need, and we're gonna have a letter out to the developers, and we're gonna set a, a date for that.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that. I, I think this has gone on quite a while, and I'd feel more assured if I knew when we would get the information we need from the town council and from engineering, so that we can come up with an, an action plan.
Right.
And this, you know, frankly, I'd like to see it happen at the next meeting, but I, I don't know if that's possible.
We'll, we'll start working on putting that together for you, for thanks being, that would be part of the update. And then hopefully, at that point, you'll have enough, and we could put together at least an initial letter. Uh, we'll try to put one together-
Okay.
-for the boards, for you to look at.
If, if we're gonna put an initial letter together, one of the things that I'd like to see, in order to decide we're gonna move, if I would move forward a letter or not, is, as, as, as we saw in Gimme Circle, we've seen on others, is always a set of conditions. And what I wanna understand is what conditions are they in violation of?
Yeah.
Cause that's where we, as a board, have leverage. If they're not in violation of any conditions, the fact is that they've done a poor job, the gentleman, you've got, you know, they have to come back and fix some things in your house, and they're behind on other things, and we're concerned about the surety, that's all important, and we need to address it. But, you know, we put conditions in there for a reason, and if they're in violation of those conditions, I'd like to know which ones they're in violation of. Thank you.
Anyone else? So, I think we're gonna move on on this one for now, but I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much. Okay. So that was the board discussion on Lookout Ridge Cluster Subdivision Surety. Um, next item under board discussion is Planning Board Rules and Regulations, which was continued from our, was it August 20th?
August 20th, yeah.
Oh, yeah, August 20th.
Yeah, it was, we just did not have enough, uh, board members. Uh, we, at least now we have a full board to discuss it. Um, there's, um, you know, presented to the, uh, to the planning board for your, for your review, is, um, the, the, uh, you have the packet, the rules and regulation. Within the rules and regulation, there are two slight changes. Uh, the first change comes, uh, with the selection, the selection of the chair. We initially, there was an initial decision that was biannual, although the determination was made that the chair can serve two consecutive years. Uh, we were informed by the town clerk that it cannot be a biannual appointment of the board, so it has to, um, a reorganization must happen every year. Um, and the other highlighted, um, um, issue was, um, opening a meeting, uh, with less than quorum for the continuation of the meeting, that's in there. And then two other things, which were, I would say, outside of the, um, and, and, outside of the rules and regulations, but we're looking, we are not, Jeff brought it up, for potential inclusion within the rules and regulations are, one, uh, how to conduct a, a public hearing, and two, um, uh, public, uh, public comments. Uh, in the last packet, we included the public comment, um, uh, criteria that was put forth by, with the, with the selectmen use. Um, if, you know, if this board so chooses to, um, have a public comment period, um, we, we would highly recommend for consistency throughout the, throughout the town, that you- highly recommend for consistency throughout the, throughout the town that you would adopt the, the same criteria established by the selectmen. Now we discuss this.
For clarity, Ralph, there are four items.
Mm-hmm.
And if there's five, just tell me it's five or three, but I think there's four. The first being the biannually versus annually election. We have to do it annually because that's what the town charter says.
Right.
That change is being reflected in the updated rules and regulations.
Yes, well.
Second one is the work we went through to understand about not having a quorum, starting the meeting, opening a public hearing, so the public hearing can be continued to when there is a quorum, the decision was made that, or decision was reached, I shouldn't say made, that that was acceptable after you spoke with council, and that we were going to reflect that in the rules and regulations. Is that now reflected in the rules and regulations?
That's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's in there, I forget what page, but it's highlighted in, in red.
Okay. The third item is, a while back, I had suggested that as part of the rules and regulations, which is, you know, a document which helps new, particularly new members, understand how the board operates, that we include a section on running a public hearing. And are you, as far, and when I say you, I mean the planning department.
Right.
The planning department recommending that not be included or be included?
We put it outside of it because it was not initially included, so with, honestly, we're making no recommendation on it. It is helpful, the way it's spelled out, but I, but I think that's something that's really, should be the decision of this board if they want it in or, or not.
But I know in the end they'll be deserved for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I didn't, yeah.
I was just wondering what your recommendation was.
I didn't, yeah, no, we'd, you know, for that one, again, it, it, it's helpful, you know, it's helpful the way it, it's laid out. I think it's, you know, personally, it's helpful, it, but I think you, you know, if you so choose, the, the board should go through it to make sure that they're comfortable with each, with each step.
Okay. And then the fourth item is, again, I had noted it, in, in, the reason I had noted it was back, and I actually have the article here, back in the enterprise, it goes way back, was in March 22nd, there was an article written by a young lady, and what she did, she highlighted the boards that have a public comment, agenda item, and those that do not have a public comment, agenda item. She noted the planning board didn't have one, we don't have one, so I had suggested at the time that we should discuss that and decide if we should have one or not have one. I don't know if that would go in the procedural rules and regulations or not, because I don't know, it's an agenda, it would be something we would add to the agenda, and I don't know if the agenda is described in the planning rules and regulations, but that was the reason I brought it forward, was because of the article. With respect to your comment that the select board has a public comment section, other boards, there are a few other boards that do, for instance, you know, I sit on the CPC and there's one on there. The select board has a procedure written about how that's to be, how that's to be conducted. Do all, I think there are 11 or 12 boards that have public comment. Do they all use the select board's procedure? Do any of them have their own procedure?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of them has, have formalized their, their public, their public speaking section. So the only one which has done that is the, is the board of, the select board. So as you probably know, your other boards, I don't think they have a rules and regulations for, for the CPA, for the CPC. The, the board, the, the planning board is one of the few boards that does because of, because of the nature of the board and it's, and, you know, it's developed through Mass General Law, and, you know, the, the, the series, you know, and the work you do, it's as an adjudicatory board, so I think that there are more parameters around the planning board, you know, and you establish, you establish your own rules and procedures, you know, as an elected board, so it's, 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 it's helpful to have.
Thank you. If, so if I may, through the chair, the two, those two items. With respect to the description of the procedure for running a public hearing in our planning procedural rules and regulations, I put that forward as something that I believe would be helpful to have in there. In my experience on this board, I will tell you, when I came on the board, and I won't speak for others, but what I did was I watched and observed those who had been on the board much longer than me, and that's how I learned. What I found shortly after that, and I don't recall shortly, maybe a year or three years, was that just because someone's been on the board, and this includes me, for a long time, does not mean they are always operating in accordance with, how we should be. And what I found was, we don't, we weren't, so I forget when we actually put these rules and regulations together, because they were not in place when I first joined the board. I think it was Bob King who actually brought the first set forward. The idea behind it was to help new, particularly new members, but even us older members, you know, operate in a certain way consistently for, for valuable reasons. I did a little research where I went out and I read procedures, rules and regulations for planning boards on other towns on the Cape, and a few on the South Shore, and many of them do have in there is a description on how to run a public hearing. A public hearing is a very formal event. As noted earlier, you know, we open it formally, we take testimony and, and so forth, so it's important that we run it consistently, and there are, there are elements of it that maybe I haven't done consistently. So that's why I, I am suggesting that we put it in there. I did draft it, I then sent it to the planning board. Ralph and Leanne looked it over, Leanne made some modifications to it, so, and, you know, I believe I'm speaking correctly, Ralph, and I say that she's now in agreement with it, that it does comply. She didn't find any issue with it, so it, it was my initial draft, and then Leanne changed and corrected a few things on it as we went forward. So now I'm putting forward to the board that we recommend that we add it to the procedural rules and regulations for that reason. I don't know if we want to discuss this separately, and then I can talk about the second one I put forward. Thank you, Chair. Person.
I think keeping it separate might be fitting. I think that there is a bit of discretion that's afforded to a chair, so I think it's a nice guide, but I think the order in which meetings are had with, you know, who presents what first, and letting the public partake with certain discussions, while there's guidelines, I think that, you know, must be adhered to. I think there is a certain level of discretion, and I think for that reason, keeping it separate might be appropriate, it's available, you know, if asked for or requested, so I think it is very helpful to new and older members alike.
Can I ask for clarification? What do you mean by separate? I don't know what you mean by separate.
So I think the conversation, as I understand it, unless I misunderstood, was whether or not to include it inside the procedural rules and regulations, or to keep it as a separate document? Is that, did I misunderstand that, or is that what?
No, that's correct. I would like to see it as part of the procedural rules and regulations.
Okay. And in my, and what I was saying was, is I think keeping it separate was more fitting for the reasons that I explained. Anyone want to add anything? Okay.
Through the chair, I don't know if this is exactly being separate, but if we could put it as an appendix, so.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so you have it right at your fingertips in case you need it, so it's not within it, but.
Just to that point, that's, that meets my, you know, appendix is part of the document, so I, I'm just looking for it to become part of the document. So when a document is handed to someone, it's a piece of it. You know, it, it appears in the con, table of content, you know, it would say appendix, and it would say boop. So, you know, if that's, if that meets everyone's, you know, okay, you know, appendix is fine with me, it's still part of the document.
That's fine.
It would be part of the document as guidance, not as rule.
Yep, exactly. Sounds good.
I don't know what that means. Does it, I mean, I know the document says rules and regulations, but there are many things in here that are guidance.
To me, to me, it means, going to your point, that it's there, it's in the packet, so everybody has it for learning, and we're all on the same page, but there's flexibility that the chair would have and how would they follow.
Well, the doc, okay. It's, it's kind of moot because the document gives the chair that flexibility within the document itself. Leanne made sure of that, so, but that's fine. I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so.
So can I, the second item then, may I?
Of course.
So I think we're in agreement that the appendix is okay. The second item, and it's listed under this, but was the idea of public comment. Shall we add to the agenda as other boards have a opportunity for the public to come in and speak? We can, we can agree to follow the select board's procedure. I think there are some words in the select board's procedures that don't apply to us, but other than that, that was the only reason I put a separate set together, so as noted in the enterprise article, there are a few boards that do not have it on their agenda. We are one of them. I thought it best that, since it hadn't been highlighted, that we should at least discuss it and come to a formal decision to try it or not to try it.
So what is it you want to do? You want to add some guidelines for individuals speaking at a public meetings, and you want to add that to the, can you?
No. No, what I want, what I had suggested was, on the agenda, the first agenda item would be public comment. That's how it's handled by the other boards. That's what was noted in the article, was that we don't allow public comment like some of the other boards.
I think it's appropriate to have public comment in the beginning, and I, I think if we can standardize it and use the guidelines that the board, the select board uses, makes sense, so I, I would be in favor of that.
Okay. Some of them were just talking about general comments?
If you read, if you, if you read the procedure that the select board wrote, it gives you guidelines on what can and can't be handled during that public comment session.
Would that fit, now how would that parlay into other matters not reasonably anticipated if a public came forward? I mean, is that, is that just for the board to?
I'm, I'm going to say, right, as, as a personal note, I don't think, and, you know, we've discussed this eternally, that public comment, a public comment section on the agenda is necessary for, for the planning board, and I carry that over to the zoning board and even to the, the other board, we, historic district committee, the adjudicatory boards, and as adjudicatory boards, you know, we have, we have public hearing, so, I mean, generally speaking, it's a, you know, a good forum for, for the school district and for the board of, the select board, because, you know, people come in and they make comments, you know, oh, you know, and I'm being facetious here, oh, yard sale, and, you know, you know, and, you know, the, you know, the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, all, all admirable things, but really, that's more the proper forum for it, because, you know, we have opportunities, you know, this board has never stifled anybody from speaking to matters that this board has jurisdiction over. We saw it tonight, we also, whenever anybody wants to speak to the board, even though, even though it's a little outside of it, we have a discussion with the chair, and we put it on, and we put it on as an agenda item. I think, you know, planning board, zoning board, stark district committee, I mean, really, the business of these boards are to, are, right, are to either grant or deny permits or variances, you know, these are, you know, unique decision, decision-making boards, and, you know, and again, it's always up to the discretion of the chair, you know, as, as we saw tonight, to get input on matters which you may be addressing in the future. That's just, you know, those are, that's, you know, our concern, it's always, you know, the concern, this is the decision of, of, of you, if you want to have, you know, if you want to have public comment, you know, we will put it on as a agenda item, but, but sort of, you know, we're not here, I'm not looking to stifle public comment, but again, these adjudicatory boards, you, you know, many, many opportunities for public comment on what's being heard, and if you want to, if you want to know what's going on, come next Tuesday night to the ZBA in Village Green, and people have a lot of opportunities to make public comment, so.
Thanks, Ralph.
If I?
I guess I just want to understand a little bit, because when I look at the procedure, it says, "A public comment period shall not address matters related to public hearings included on the agenda." And so the public would then have an opportunity to make any comment about anything that's not on the agenda, because we already provide under the new and old business, an opportunity for public comment, and then under board discussion, it's at the discretion of the chairs, that way.
The public comment, as, and I will just speak directly to it as from the select board, is anybody could come up and say pretty much anything. They have like that five minutes or 10 minutes in the beginning, and then 15 minutes, or, I think it's, there's no time limit at, at the end, so. So, and, and you can, you know, again, I'm just giving you information, it's up to you to decide if you want it or put parameters around it, if, if you so choose to, to engage in public comment, but again, I don't think it would be appropriate, you can't have, right, you can't have public comment associated with, 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 with the public hearing, because then that becomes, right, so that becomes, that becomes part of it, and then some, then you can't, if it, if you have public comment at the end, you can't take other testimony if you've closed it, so.
So the comment I was going to make in response, the reason, as I say, I brought it forward because it appeared in the enterprise, my position on is, I feel we should try it and put it on as an agenda item, says public comment is, is procedure as to, and we can use the select board's procedure. It invites the public to come. I, I think there are times when a public sees agenda items, and they will come and speak about that agenda item. What this gives the public an opportunity to do is come and speak about things that are not listed, and a lot of the public are not going to contact the planning department and say, gee, can you put me on the agenda? And then the, that has to be coordinated with the chair, and they have to decide if they're going to put it on there or not. And I'll just use a, for instance, let's say for instance, a resident is concerned because a lot next to them gets clear cutted, and they can, you know, gee, we're allowing lots to get totally cut down. Yeah, I'd, I'd like the public, I'd like the planning department to take a look at that. What a public comment would be was someone could show up. We don't know they're coming to talk about that, but that's, they want, they want to voice that to somebody they think will listen to them, and maybe act on it, so they see an opportunity. So they see an opportunity, ooh, planning board, they handle bylaws and zoning and so forth, and this is a concern to me. And they don't have to pre-coordinate it, they don't have to call the office, they show up the meeting, it's, it's at the beginning, they follow, and they get to speak on it. And we, and we, and we do it in the manner in which the procedure, like the select board. And then, based on that, at some future meeting, we can put it on the agenda to talk about it. Are we going to look at a bylaw, prepare a bylaw? This is what the planning board is doing, we've heard, we've gotten inputs. But typically, and I'm thinking of the one, you know, the woman that wanted to do the micro.
The microblading?
Yeah, microblading. She had to contact the office, and then you had to get on the agenda, and, and there's some formality to it, and that formality is good, I'm not ridic, I'm not saying it's not. It says her individuals are not going to do that, don't have the time or effort, or maybe they don't think they have the knowledge, but a public comment allows them to come and offer that to us, and then we can hear from the public and decide, do you want it to move out or not? And I understand we're a regulatory board, so we can't handle it as a public hearing, nor would we. But it's an input, that's all it is. I was on the preparation of the local comprehensive plan, and one of the things that we did hear from the public is that, as a community, it's diff, they felt it was difficult to know and to have given the opportunity to speak and be heard. So I think giving more opportunity is a good thing. They may not go to the select board to talk about clear cutting, but they might come to us, or they might go to some other board. And I, and I just, I want to invite them to do that. That, you know, that goes back to the point I had earlier about that board discussion. I was just concerned, because people see board discussion, they think, board discussion, it's typically how we hold them, board and staff. Public input, I'd like us to be more upfront and make that notable. We could try it. Try it for six months, less, more. If it works, great. If we find it becomes conflicting with other things we're doing, getting in the way of our regulatory role, then we can eliminate it, we can, we can remove it. But if we don't try it, we'll never know. And that's my thoughts. Thank you.
I think it's a great idea. I would just like to see whether we can curtail some of the advertisements and things going on that could happen, I guess, because we're not really limiting the scope, other than any items that are not on the agenda.
I guess, I was wondering, in this policy, it provides, I think, they have to get advance notice, and putting the topic they want to discuss in advance, that's in here, and is it possible to have a step where we say, that is, or is not really within the scope of any work?
So, are you looking at what I wrote, or what the select board? Because with this, the suggestion was that we use the select board and not create a new one. I did write something, and that is in there, but.
Well, I'm not sure I'm looking at what was in the package, is that what she wrote, or?
Well, it was in, this week's package was guidelines for individuals speaking at public meetings.
That is, is yours?
This is mine.
Yes, yeah, that's my.
This, but the one that I, that was in the packet that Maureen sent out, was the select board.
One with the, has the yellow.
Yeah, had the yellow liner, that's select board.
So, now I'm confused, so the one, the one you proposed has advanced notice of topic?
It did.
Which I, I just, I was thinking that might be, I'm going to review and cull out, it was really not related to that.
Yeah, this week's package, what was sent was the select board, when it was recommended, and I understand why, it would create some uniformity, just have one set out there. I, I, I put that together just, I didn't know, at the time, I didn't know there was one out there.
It's funny, just because, and why am I not?
I got confused on what he wanted to add.
And the topic coming on the agenda, that was not relevant from planning board at all.
But that has to be, like, written in there, that there's, like, a particular scope, because obviously, yeah.
Would then manage, sorry.
Yeah, I know, that would be.
That sounds like a job.
So it, it would be, Maureen would say, no good, don't, okay, you can speak.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand what we're trying to resolve or fix, because I've only been on the board for maybe two and a half years now, but I don't remember a time where we haven't allowed someone the opportunity to, to address us when they were here for a comment.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't think that's what Jeff's getting at. I think what Jeff is trying to do is, because we do allow people to have that opportunity, but this would kind of make it, formalize it a little bit more, that you are welcome to come and share with us your concerns. I hear what you're saying, I, I think it does need to be within the scope of what our jurisdiction is. But I, I think anything that encourages the public to participate in the process more is a good thing, and, and I would agree with him on, why not give it a try? I hardly think the room will be full of people every week, or every month. I'm not worried about that. And wouldn't that be a great problem to have if we had that level of participation? But I, I think, I, I think to go back to the article in the newspaper, I think that said something, that the, the public feels that they don't have an opportunity to make public comment. And it may or may not be true, but they don't understand that, and I think if we just formalize it a bit more, what's the harm in that?
Yes, I'm concerned about the education that would need to happen so that they would understand what is within our scope.
I think that's where we'd have to provide guidance. If somebody came in and bought a cake sale, sorry, that's not within the scope of the planning board. I think, you know.
But who would manage that?
The chair.
So people would just come in and then, but they would have to present their item that they wanted to discuss in advance, and then someone would tell them if that was appropriate or not, or within our scope, so, within our purview, so who would be managing that prior to the meeting?
That might be something at the meeting, when they come and say their name and address, and then, you know, we could start with a general procedure of, you know, state the purpose for you coming before us, and then they state that, and then at that point, I have a little segment I say about what our jurisdiction is. You know, I can have, just to kind of, and I think that'd be good for all of us to hear too. And then let them kind of start, and if it's not within the jurisdiction, I might just have to kind of guide them, maybe elsewhere.
Through, through the chair, if you look at the guidelines that were presented, that we, submitted with the packet, as Jeff indicated, the ones from the select board, that, that sort of management aspect is out, so we don't, you know, pretty much, you know, anyone can make, it, it doesn't limit the comment, just be respectful, is pretty much in a nutshell. The other thing is, again, for public comment, it's not a back and forth between the board and, and, and the person who's making the public comment, because sometimes it, it does, it does get into that, if you've watched it, on, on the select board occasionally tries to, it tries to get in, and they've been very good in, in not making it go to that, but it does, and I think, and I understand where, where Jeff is coming from, I mean, we do, you know, it is, I guess, to loosen up the process, to get people, I mean, if it's, you know, if it's to sort of, hey, what's working, what's not working, and how can zoning fix it? Let's boil it down to its simple form. If that's what public comment achieves, then, then, you know, we've been successful. You know, if, if you see in the next six months, and, you know, bake sale, bake sale, bake sale, then why are we having, you know, why, why are we having, why are we having public comment? So.
Would it be possible to?
Unless they bring in free food. I'm sorry, Ellen.
Would it be possible to maybe perhaps just, like, have the comments, like, quarterly or something like that, like, not at every single meeting, but, you know, just in a certain timeframe, so that it doesn't always interrupt the business of the board, but it does provide the public with the opportunity to speak?
That's not a bad idea. Or even like once a month, one, like, the first, the first.
Or, yeah, you could make a determined, right, the first meeting of the month is, is public comment meeting, and that's.
That could work. So we can try and try it and see how much activity we get. Addresses everybody's, you know, opinions and.
Yeah, we kind of meet the goal of getting more of the public involved and giving them an opportunity.
Okay, I think that sounds agreeable, I'm happy with that. So it sounds like, in summary, maybe adding a public comment to the agenda for.
First meeting of the month.
First meeting of the month.
Mm-hmm.
We'll try it out for six months, and then maybe add it to a board discussion, revisit it at that time, and see if you want to leave it on.
Just for housekeeping items, so are you happy, are we going to keep the guidelines for, for public meetings, so, so if you can, the rules and regulations, we have to update it, if you can accept the changes that were made, so the changes were, one, changed bi-annual to annual, change two was, was that we can open a meeting when we don't have a quorum to, to, to continue, and the second, it put it in an appendix for, an appendix for how to, how to run a public hearing, or the steps of a public hearing, and two, the appendix guidelines for, for public comment, and public comment will be the first meeting of the month for the planning board.
Yes, I, one question on the steps for the public hearing. I was looking at the document, and now I'm seeing entitled, "Public Hearing Procedure, Jeff.pdf." Is there, is that the one?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the one for me, it's select, select board.
Okay, so the guidelines for public meetings, is that this, adding that as an appendix, is that the same as adding the public comment? Because I was kind of, was this?
That's the public, that's the public comment criteria that, that the select board follows.
Okay, so this is separate from the addition to the appendix, or this would be the addition? So they're the same, it's just adding?
It would be a, a second appendices.
Okay, so what would be, because I was looking at the document that Jeff created, and from that exchange, I think that I might be looking at a different document of what would be added as an appendix for the public hearing procedure, I think I'm just.
Oh, okay, so, no, so there are two.
Okay.
So one was, one, the initial conversation was the public hea, the public hearing procedure.
So this is what I have for.
Yes.
And this one is entitled Jeff.
And yeah.
Is that the one that Leanne had reviewed and approved?
Yes, yes.
So that's what would get attached to the append, as an appendix?
For, for public hearing guidelines.
For public hearing guidelines. Okay, so the title of that is, "Public Hearing Procedure, Jeff.pdf," is, yeah, is the one that we got in our agenda items that Leanne reviewed and approved. So if anybody else wanted clarity on that, I just, I was unclear until you and Jeff exchanged that. Okay, thank you.
And then the second appendix would be guidelines for individuals speaking at public meetings.
Which has the yellow highlight?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Everybody feel good about all those? Okay. So if that, if everybody's satisfied with that topic, we will move. Oh, yep.
Yep. Do you want to make a motion to accept it, or we bring back the completed document, you make a motion?
Yes, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I'll make a mo, I'll take a motion to accept all of the, the four items.
So we're not going to get a completed document to review and then accept that?
However, you, you tell me what you want to do, we could, we could put it, we could put it together and you take a, like, the clean document.
Might just for myself, like, to see it in white, black and white, that would just help me to process, because it sounded like there were four different.
There were.
Okay.
Just for clarity on which items are going to be in the appendices.
Yes.
And the appendices is going to have maybe a clear title?
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
And maybe like a date of when things were created?
Oh yeah, we normally have that, as amended, as amended, yeah, so we will have.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll table that for next meeting. Okay. Next agenda item is going to be, request for comment, file number 24-27 Georges Rock Road, special permit, Pollard, if I can spell that, say that name correctly. The date of it is September 19th, 2024, which the memorandum submitted to the town, and Ralph, you want to give us a little bit of?
Yeah, the, this is going before the zoning board of appeals, 7 Georges Rock Road, right around the corner. What they're doing is they're knocking down the existing building, building a new one, and because it is in a flood zone, well, the primary reason for the, for the special permit is construction greater than 300 square feet within the flood zone requires a, requires a special permit. New construction, it will meet, as, as indicated in the application, it will meet flood, flood code compliance.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
I always get confused by this. Is it only because it's in a flood zone, or is it also that it's on a non-conforming lot?
Yeah, it's, if it's, there's, there's actually three things going.
Okay.
One, one is the setback. They're seeking relief for the setback. Two, they're seeking relief, because if it's in a non-conforming lot outside of, outside of a subdivision, if the, if the structure's getting 30% larger, then it requires a special permit, and then flood zone, and then the flood zone.
Are you large here, are you referring to the square footage of the home?
Yes.
Any comments to bring forward on this one?
I'm not sure what our exact purview is on this. I did notice in the application that it says they're proposing to replace it with a new one-story, two-bedroom home, but when you look at the renderings, it appears that it will be, or at some point will be, a two-story home.
I think that's.
Windows, unless that's just completely for the outside aesthetics, but that's what it looks like, because it's on pilings, and then there's a first floor, and clearly, like, the, the attic floor that has, you know, finished windows and so forth. So I don't know if that's within our purview or not.
That falls outside the purview, that's more of a zoning, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, the, it's, if it falls within the height restrictions, which is 35 feet from above, above flood, so, you know, the situation, what, you know, what, you know, what is your, what is your purview as associated with this? You know, if, you know, if you feel somehow that it's, you know, you have a question, you know, a question with zoning, you want the ZBA to look at, then that's a, then that's a comment, you know, then that's a comment you could put forward. You know, if you, if there's, if you have a question about fill, or, or, you know, you really feel that somehow, you know, this board is reviewing it, and, you know, you know, please, you know, take a look, that, that flood compliance is, is taking place, that may cause nuisance hazard congestion, you know, those are all within your, your purview.
Okay, thanks, Ralph. Does that answer your question a little bit?
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, I guess if, you know, the 22, 34 square feet would certainly increase if they were to, at some future point, finish the attic floor as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to say, I, I looked at it quickly, and I thought the, the, and, I didn't, I thought the original structure's one-story, two bedrooms, and I think they're expanding it, so, but, I, I, again, I just looked at it quickly, I thought that's what it said, and, but, but I know they're increasing it more than 30%, so, and it's that increase that, that, you know, we, it used to just be the determination of the building commissioner, but we figure on these small lots, you really feel when a, when a, when you get a big, right, a big, a big house next to you, so that's why we want to give the, the butters an opportunity to, to see what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, if the house is there, and, you know, Title V, with the septic is complied with, which would be part of it, you know, I, yeah, I, I think any increase in zoning compliance would fall to the zoning board. I don't, I don't, I don't feel necessary to bring anything forward, I don't know if anybody else feels differently. Okay, great.
Okay, great. So nothing to bring forward on that one, or comment. The other comment item is 48 Wood Avenue, a variance for the homeowner, who was also the applicant.
Yeah, this is, the homeowner's seeking variances over in Town Neck, those lots, those lots are very tight, it's, so, the setbacks, the side setbacks are six feet on one side, eight foot in another, the builder sort of did a slight cantilever bump out, you know, he had an eight-foot setback, so he's encroaching the setback by about a foot. So it's just sort of a cantilever that, for, for, for a fireplace chimney, so he's seeking a, a variance for that. And I think, if I remember correctly, the total, it's like two square feet would be the encroachment into the, into the setback, and that's what he's seeking the variance for.
I have no comment. Okay, seeing no comment from anyone else, we will move to other matters not reasonably anticipated. None?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
In recognition, Ralph, of you leaving, can you share with us what the plan is, as to, is your position going to be backfilled, or we, is, is, you know, we, we deal, as you know, a lot with you, and, and Maureen, and, and it used to be LeAnn, LeAnn moved on to another position, so, has any, have any decisions been made, and can you share with us?
Yeah, so, LeAnn will be filling this position temporarily, until they're going to be probably putting out a, the hope is to get a town planner before the end of the year. So, so a new person will be, you know, a new person will, will have this, will be helping you with your decision-making process, and then, you know, at that point, you know, LeAnn will fulfill her other duties as, as the Director of Community Development. So, you know, fortunate, you know, for us, you know, we, we've been a team for, for seven years, and, you know, we, we know what's going on, and, and I feel a, a little bad that, you know, LeAnn has, has to take a slight step back, but she does enjoy working with the board, and she knows everything that's going on, so, so, you know, a little bit of rearrangement in the office, but we are seeking to get it, the town is looking for, looking for a town, for a town planner.
Has it been posted, do you know?
Not yet, we're just working out some of, some of the details, so...
Thank you. I, the last comment I'd make, if I could, I was on the Planning Board when Ralph came into this position, as he said, seven years ago, and it's been fabulous working with you. I think, you know, the entire department is, is very supportive, has been very supportive, and is very supportive, the Planning Board needs. I think you keep us, and have kept us, well-founded, I don't know if that's the right word, but I think sometimes we can go off, particularly me, into different areas, and you always bring us back to center.
I never, I never saw that.
Back to center. So I know I've appreciated it greatly. One of my fears is, is hopefully, and I'm sure we will, I'm sure the town will do a great job of, of bringing somebody in, but having someone like yourself that's, can keep me centered, is great. So, thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to say thank you to all of you, I've really enjoyed working with this board. As you may know, I started off my sort of career working for the town as a, I was a Planning Board member, so this, you know, this board is a little, little special to me, and I, I knew as a member, you know, the things I wanted, I wished the planning office did, and, and I hope I, you know, I hope I helped you in your decision-making process, so, you know, provide clarity when we can, and opinions and the memos, so, you know, point you in a direction of where to look at, and then, and then, we were always there to answer questions, and, and I'm, I'm glad, I will, I will miss all of you, and I'll definitely miss, you know, I'll miss, you know, LeAnn and Maureen, we, again, we've been together for seven years, and I don't think I've been with anybody for seven years, other than Mrs. Deborah Vettaco. So...
Thanks for everything, Ralph, you have been really great in helping keep us in line, and on topic, and answering a lot of questions, so, and thank you too.
So calm about it.
Yeah.
Just a wealth of information.
You'll be missed.
Yeah, no, and as, I'll miss all of you, thank you.
Okay, so on that note, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.